Good morning. It's nice to be here. We are going tonight to stand, Commissioner Horns is going to lead us to information.
Pleasure. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you this day, Lord, for bringing us together. Lord, we thank you for our community here in Gates, Lord. Father, we just pray that you give us discernment and wisdom today, Lord, in all the things that we do, Lord, and all the things that we say. We just pray that this county be blessed through it, Lord, that it would flow through your hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Now it will turn and say the place of allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which the saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
At this time I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the County of Gates to order for June 3rd, 2015. The first item of business is approval of the amendments for May 6th, May 12th, May 14th, and May 18th. Do I hear any corrections to those amendments?
I'm channeling there. I did have some administrative corrections that the clerk did ask if we could give those corrections to her prior to meeting, but somehow I forgot. But on page five, I think it reflects the 1670. In that first paragraph, it should be they are requesting something in writing that would guarantee the group, guarantee the group the ability, to ability. Also on page 1678, W financial report. I don't know if this is a correction. I would ask that the clerk verify that the $1,044 on the same date is not a due date. So.
Okay. Any corrections? Do I hear a motion to approve the amendments as correctly?
Should move.
Motion's been made, second.
Second.
Motion been made and promptly second. In discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to amend the agenda adjustments. There are two adjustments we need to make to the agenda. Under number four, delegations, we are going to move unites delegations to be A and unites delegations to be B. And under number eight, new business, the first item number seven, budget amendments, we now have budget amendments should be 20 through 29. Do I hear a motion to amend the agenda?
Should move. Second.
A motion has been made to amend the agenda as requested by switching the order of delegations and adding an all amendment to the budget amendments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Moving along to delegations. Today we have four several unites delegations. The first one is Dr. Landon Mason of EIC updates.
I want to say good morning to Board Chair Vice Chair, County Commissioners and Port Chair. Let me say thank you first and foremost for the space today to share with you how you can improve the council that's located in Eglinton, North Carolina. On behalf of our team at the board, Board Chair, Mr. Martin Carter, likewise, we send their greetings. Again, my name is Dr. Landon Mason. I share as we do executive director for the agency. I am honored to serve in this capacity that we can be a force for those that are economically deprived. Your presence is a blessing.
I'll show my plan off.
Yes, ma'am. Michael, can you hear me?
It's fine, he's black.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me better? Better? All right. Thank you very kindly. Again, back in 1964, President Lyndon Johnson, of course, raped war on poverty. And ever since 1964, EIC has been in business for the past 50 years, helping to eliminate and eradicate and to minimize poverty. My purpose here is threefold. One, I want to introduce myself to this council of commissioners, so you can put a name with a face, face with a name. I've been here serving this the past before 12 months. In addition to that, I just want to give you a brief, a very brief outline of services that we provide. And then lastly, I want to share a funded profile of the funding that our agency shares here in Gates County. If it would be some kind to, I have pamphlets, and I will not go over all of this information, but what I will do, it does briefly highlight it. In our agency, of course, we have four programs, as you see here listed. Head Start Section Eight Housing, Weatherization Program, and a Community Services Block Grant. Our Community Services Block Grant program is there to help clients here engage and become self-sufficient. Our Head Start program, of course, serves preschool children ages three and five. Section Eight Housing, we offer our assistance to help families. And then, of course, last but not least, we offer a weatherization service where we come in and we make homes more energy efficient. In saying that, there is also a newsletter that highlights and captures some of the success stories of clients that we serve, so you can see the work that we're doing. Oftentimes, if what we're doing is not shared, then it's like putting a light up under a bush. And we want to make our communities aware that EIC is alive and is aware that we provide services to the least of these. Let me, in finality, let me just give you a brief overview of what each of those programs bring into the county of Gates for funded purposes. Our Section Eight program, we serve approximately 33 families. Every month, there is over $10,000 out of our Edmonton office that is invested here in the county. Our annual dollars spent here in Gates is well over $121,000 in our Section Eight program. In our Head Start program, we serve 20 children monthly. That's over $14,000 that our office literally comes in to help support Gates annually. It's $168,710 plus dollars. Our CSBG program, there is approximately eight families that we serve, and there is over $2,000 this fiscal year that we have been able to share the help here in Gates. And last but not least, we have weatherized five homes in Gates County totaling over $26,000. Accumulated total of the services and money spent here in Gates County is well over $318,716. And I want to, again, thank you very, thank you so much for allowing me to come and share what we're doing out of our Edmonton office to be able to help empower the community here in Gates. As you see, we serve 10 counties, Gates County, of course, being one of those counties. And I'm definitely open to any questions or comments or observations that you may have as related to the services that we provide here in Gates.
Well, we just want to say a big thank you for what you are doing in the county and what you will continue to continue to do in the future. Certainly, that has made, has an enormous impact on our community for those that we have helped and will help in the future. Is, does anyone have any?
As far as someone that they want to get assistance from the I C website or to follow or DSS, how many avenues do they have to get in touch with the I C?
Beautiful. We are actually in the process of expanding our network. Community partners, of course, they get the word in terms of how to apply the services. We also have our website that's located, our Edmonton office member is also located. In our Community Services Block Grant, there is a case manager that's on the ground here in Gates. And there are, from time to time, there are announcements that's placed in public places, there are public meetings that we attend to get the word out. Of course, all our services are income based. You have to qualify for this assistance. But we do have a strong collaboration with different grassroots entities here engaged to make sure that the word is out. What we discovered oftentimes, people that need the service don't hear about the service, and people that don't need the service hear about the service. So we make it an intentional point to make sure we can get into these areas to get the word out that we are, you know, in the business of serving the community of Gates.
Okay. And hopefully, the people here today will help spread more.
Yes, ma'am. I would urge with this comment, Abraham Lincoln stated, "He has a right to criticize who has a heart to help." And this embodies my universal meaning as we look around these 10 counties, making a difference in the lives and impacting people, the least of those, those that are voices. We have promised and we've committed to them that we'll be their voice, the marginalized, the disenfranchised, the those for some reason or another have any kind of disfunction in economic way. We have committed and we've promised them that we'll be their voice. Thank you so much for your time. We look forward to the continued collaboration. I come not needing anything. That ought to be something that would really, really, you know, a pay up because because in the climate that we're serving, everybody that comes, most of the people that come to your, that comes on this platform, they're honestly, they're asking for something, but I'm actually coming to inform you what we have to offer and the work that we're doing. And if you all could be so kind to just give the I C a hand, I just appreciate that. Thank you very kindly.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. We also have today Ann Blitt for the Alamo Regional Solid Waste Management Forum.
Hi. Thank you for having me here today. I wanted to make a few comments about our solid waste program. I work with the Seven County Group, and you have your own three county group called Perquimans, Chelan Gates Solid Waste Management. That is a department of the Health Department, Alamo Regional Health Services, or A R H S. The executive director is Mr. Ralph Halliwell, and the program director at Perquimans, Chelan Gates, Landville, and who also oversees the, man that also oversees the sites is Brad Gardner. And we have three members here that are on the P C G Landville Commission Board, and Ms. Hawker, and Ms. Brown Tree, and Mr. Felton. And so they are familiar with the program. The budget for P C G Landville is actually part of the health services budget, Alamo Regional Health Services. That's about $850,000 this year for Gates County's portion, which they only take the much they use, so it could be probably less. See, the contractor for hauling waste is Republic Services. They've had the contract a few years now. So the Perquimans, Chelan Gates, Landville is not actually all of those trash hauling trucks. The prices this year for hauling are actually coming in under budget since the diesel fuel is less. We're making some improvements out of the sites this year. C and L concrete is going to be paving Sunbury site pretty soon, most of it, and the next one online is the Verduco site. The recycling is getting a little bit easier for the customers, and we do have new recycling flyers that are now posted online in the Gates County website, on the My Gates County site, and they're also on our site, the Alamo Regional site, Alamo Regional, excuse me, Almorsolidwaste.org. Recycling is getting easier because the companies will allow more items in their recycling mix, and we put everything cold mingled in the recycling compacters now at the site. So just bring it to the sites separate from your trash, and your site attendant will help make sure that it gets into the recycling compactor. We do have an electronics and TVs program, a collection program, and we have a trailer for those things at the water plant site. And so any computers, TVs, or anything that hooks to those are acceptable. And we do take larger quantities from institutions like the county government or schools, and we can take those right at the landfill transfer station in Belvidere. The county will continue to collect scrap tires for now at the Sunbury site. It's been very successful. We've done about 36 tons from the site since January, so we're going to continue that. That's a little alert for you folks with a few tires at home. The tip fees right now are $64.22 a ton. That's the cost from the private landfill in Bertie County to Gates County that fluctuates monthly. Gates County, you know, wanted a recycling update, so Gates County had, last year, recycled about 270 tons of materials from the sites. Those are the household recyclables and electronics and the scrap metal. And Gates County receives, well, the counties all receive, a total of $12 a ton from tie board, fiber, where those materials are taken and sorted. The amount of waste coming from the sites from Gates County is about 46,000 tons per, excuse me, 4,630, I'm saying that all wrong, last year, so it stays about that amount each year. And if you're looking at your recycling percentage, that's only about 6% of the waste, so it's not huge, and we could do a whole lot better because we probably could recycle 30, 40% of what comes out of our households. So we do want you to pick up one of those recycling flyers out at the sites and do all the recycling that you can. And we do receive some of our funding for the program to offset the costs through grants. We write white goods grants, scrap tire grants, and the recycling improvement grants that could fund anything from our electronics program to pay for recycling. We keep writing those grants. In fact, over the last couple of years, we paid for about half the cost of the new front loader for the landfill and the excavator for the landfill through grants. So, any questions from the board?
A couple.
Yes, ma'am.
Certainly. Thank you for your job that you were doing. But recycling, I hope everyone understands that we get money back for recycling. We pay for our trash.
Thank you.
So it's more that we can recycle, the better it is for our bottom line here in the county. I did have a phone call. It was kind of ironic. I got one Monday night, and I was told that you were here. It was from one of our senior citizens. And their concern was, I really do lack an effort to recycle. And I did it and put in my big hook and go, and said, "When I get to the recycling center, sometimes the attendant will just throw it pile in the trash." And said, you know, I said, "No, that's recyclable," but they go and get piles of it.
Okay. It needs to be in a box or something that's separate, that doesn't look like trash if it's in that black bag.
This didn't look like it.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah.
So do you educate your attendants that you're, I mean, people want, I mean, she needed some assistance.
We need to do more of that. The site attendants are public servants. They work through the health department. They should be doing better than that. The citizens' part is to make sure that bag doesn't look like trash and make sure they tell us. If the site attendant is helping them, if they're too elderly to get out of the car and need that assistance, they should make sure the site attendant knows those are their recyclables and it's only 20 steps away over to the recycling compactor, and that site attendant could make that effort.
But you do train your workers.
Brand does that training, and I help when I can, and they should be trained to recycle as they can. We'll keep working on that. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman.
What steps have been taken or are being taken to provide steps for the tall waste bins that, you know, would just throw metal and wood? We've got a lot of complaints over the years about not having steps so that people can step up. Everyone's not tall enough or strong enough to toss it over there. What's been done and what hasn't been done, or just what's happened to that?
Well, we're not using the 40-yard roll-up containers anymore. Those were several feet higher. We're using the 30-yard. But we probably could get ramps, and it was recommended recently by the state insurance gentleman, Mr. Honeybloom, I forget exactly what his position is, but that we put in maybe metal ramps a few steps up and a ramp beside those containers. Brandon had get, put funding for that yet this year in his program, but I'm not sure. It might be something he could write a grant for, or?
Yeah, we, we, we get some complaints about that. Maybe some we need to take a look at, and it would help.
Okay.
Assist you quite a bit.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment.
I believe that, didn't we have a comment about that at our last board meeting? There was something about liability.
Yeah.
From our main meeting, it was brought back that it would be our responsibility, but there was a liability issue, and if we did do it, it had to be the metal ramps. It could not be the wood ramps, as Angela said.
I think one other thing to emphasize on recycling, it's pretty easy. It doesn't have to separate as it used to, separate the glass and then all the rest of it, and once the same.
Actually, the glass is combined now with everything else, Brad, just made that change at the site, so like one tub from your house.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everybody tried to recycle more, and if some of our schools do it well in recycling, I think we all could probably do better. Okay. The next unites delegation is not, Alan Lowe cannot be here. I believe Mr. Commissioner Freeman is going to speak concerning a resolution.
The resolution and a petition that has gone around, Madam Chairman, as pertaining to the, a ramp, a wildlife ramp to replace Gatlinon on the Chelan River for access for citizens, to reinstate Gatlinon as a place for gathering and for boats to be loaded and unloaded, plus also there's a safety issue there. And it's another way in the event there's an accident or an incident on the river that can get to it. So this petition is to go forward with North Carolina Wildlife to replace that wildlife ramp at Gatlinon at that site.
Would you like to read the resolution that?
I'll be happy to. The resolution as it is, a motion was made and seconded for adoption of the following resolution. Whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners is in full support of the petition collected by Gates County citizens requesting the North Carolina Wildlife Commission construct a public boat ramp and launch area at Gatlinon on the Chelan River. And whereas Gates County is bordering on the Chelan River from Bennett Street, miles to Virginia Line with 26 miles of shoreline, and there are currently only three access areas built to maintain for the public. And whereas Gatlinon Beach previously had a boat ramp and path to the river prior to the problem of becoming game land. And whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners is aware of two instances which included four facilities of four fatalities, sorry, in the past 12 months where emergency services has needed to access the northern portion of the river. And whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of fishing, outdoor recreation, and water sports for citizens of the county. And whereas the Gates County Board of Commissioners supports initiatives to expand river access and boating opportunities to the citizens. And therefore, it be resolved that the Gates County Board of Commissioners thus hereby express its support of the petition by Gates County citizens to the North Carolina Wildlife Commission requesting boat access to be constructed at Gatlinon Beach, adopted by the Gates County Board of Commissioners and signed by the Chairman of the Board this third day of June 2015.
Okay. You've seen the resolution, and they have collected a petition, I mean, signatures to, to forward it on to the Wildlife Commission for an all boat ramp. Do I hear a motion for?
Should move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Some minor discussion, that is, Richard Love of Gates also has, has supported this, and we are adopting some method for keeping the beach clean without having someone else have to set maintenance.
One other further discussion. I would add that on the first way out, that BB would be added to collective, collect, that should be collected. Also, I think we should have a copy of the names of the petitioners filed with, with our, that.
Madam Chairman, I recommend a comment to Commissioner Freeman. Do you, the petition, is this like being turned together, petition?
Yes.
The signatures?
This would go, yes.
I mean, there's no other pages. Petition pretty much sounds just like this?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe had called me because of work, he could not be here, and I, Commissioner Freeman, I'm standing. I know in some of our long-range planning, the river was something that we wanted to encourage the use of in the county. Any all comments?
No comments, but just another addition, that is, all of that land that is owned by the state in North Carolina County.
Okay. A motion has been made and promptly seconded. All those in support of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We get to the, next one of the agenda is the unites delegation. We have quite a few people on the list today. We, because of that, we do have generally just a five-minute time limit. We won't, you know, we're pretty lenient, but if you could keep your remarks somewhere that may put, we would appreciate it. First one on the list is Dr. Barry Wiggs, superintendent of Gates County Schools.
Good morning, Ms. Brown Tree, Madam Chair, and members of the board of county commissioners. I really thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you this morning on behalf of something that is real important to me as the leader of the school district. For that being said, our state constitution- For that being said, our state constitution guarantees every child in this state an opportunity to receive a sound-based education in our public schools. And when we talk about education, we're talking more than being in the classroom. We're talking on our field. We're talking in the hallway. We're talking in the parking lots. We're talking at any school board meetings, at any plays, at any extracurricular activity events that we have, education on the bus. But I think this right here is a very good moment to have some education today. What is the definition of a sound-based education? Number one, sufficient ability to read, write, and speak the English language and sufficient knowledge of fundamental mathematics and physical science to enable a student to function in a complex and a rapidly changing society. Number two, sufficient fundamental knowledge of geography, history, and basic economic or political systems to enable a student to kind of make informed choices and with regard to issues that affect a student personally or affect a student's community, state, and nation. Number three, sufficient academic and vocational skills to enable the student to successfully engage in post-secondary education or vocational training. And number four, sufficient academic and vocational skills to enable the student to compete on an equal basis with others in further formal education or gain employment in contemporary society. You know as well as I do, the state and federal government has not provided our children with a quality education. As a matter of fact, the state has cut Gates County Public Schools four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars plus to date. Senate hasn't made it. House looks good. We have to wait. It's a wait to see any. The state funding formula has not provided your students with sufficient money to educate or at-risk students and students for whom English is not their first language. When the funding level is decreased at the state level, we need additional local funds so as to reduce the impact that will be felt by our children through reduction of educational services and programs which will directly impact the education we provide our children. Now, I guess when I'm talking about a sound-based education, there's one thing that my directors know me and my principals know me for. And that is, third issue, or if there's a problem, they'll come and ask me. And if it's a problem that they can't handle, or if it's a problem with another employee, I'll say, well, let's get everybody out of there. Because the only way we're going to solve the problem is sit down and talk about it, have dialogue. One thing I don't go off on is I don't go, I don't listen to this radio. This is rumor. I surely don't listen to hearsay. This is the worst thing that can happen in social media called miscommunication. You always want to hear this when you say, well, I heard it by word of mouth. And the thing that I love the most, being an educator and a superintendent in the school district of Gates County, is this thing right here called Facebook. I think that right there covers everything. That's the umbrella of everything that I've shown up here, put together in one small box. It's what you don't know, you just go ahead and talk about. If you don't have any idea of how things work, well, you know what we gotta do? We gotta make sure that we're providing everybody with an education on the knowledge that you have and that we have. I like to present facts. I think that everybody needs to understand that there was a lot of people at my board meeting, why not say a lot, a few? And I explain facts. I think facts are important. Facts are a whole lot more valid than anything that I put up here on the little poster board. A lot of people here in the audience wasn't caring about me, but I think they didn't need to hear this if you would be so kind to let me have a few more extra minutes. On April the twentieth, my Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners had a really good meeting together. We collaborated, we had dialogue, we discussed what we needed to do. I and another board member, Mr. Byron, Mr. Blanchard, we got up and we talked about what we need to balance our budget. We addressed the amount of money district is challenged with to balance our budget and how fund balance is used to keep the school system, school system operating effectively. The meeting that we had, I thought, was very productive. I send something out to my school board members every Friday. It's called radar, lets them know what's going on. And in radar, I said, you know what, I think we're going to be good because I think, you know, we had a really good meeting. County Commissioners are, are going to do what they can for us. So on May first, I received an email and that is, that is from the county manager, Ms. Ramtree. And of course, what she put at the very beginning was, there's never a good time for bad news. Now, when I was coming in, Dr. Landon Mason was, was going out. And he told me that it was either last night or just a few days ago that in Dara County, the Board of Education was asking their county commissioners for over a million dollars. So, this isn't just in Gates County. And like state of North Carolina, especially in the northeast region, I think we're not really looked at as far as funding. But there's never a good time for bad news and she wanted to go ahead and parrot us for what she had put together as far as the budget. She stated that Gates, Gates County is not expecting the same amount of revenue for the upcoming fiscal. And to have a balanced budget without wanting to fund balance, many operating budgets will be at least the same or even less than last year. And she's not finished, she wasn't finished working on the budget, so things really looked, they may look different with her numbers. No problem. Very good, very good email. I appreciate that. On May the eleventh, we have a conversation and, you know, I asked her, what are we going to be able to receive? And she said, we're going to receive two point seven plus million dollars. That's flat funding. Which means the money that I requested, which is eight hundred ninety-six thousand, that's, that won't be appropriated because you don't have the money. I asked if I could speak with you, no problem, and I spoke with you on May the fourteenth. But in the meantime, on May the twelfth, I had to inform my board that we needed to adopt a resolution. And the resolution was to go into a state of fiscal agency. State fiscal agency means it's just filed a decrease in the number of positions in a particular category of employment. If you have more people and you have less money, then you're going to have to do something, go in to cut positions, cancel and terminate contracts for employees. And it's a process authorized and controlled by state statute. So, on May the fourteenth was a very important day and I came over here and explained to you that if we didn't receive, you know, funding, that we was going to have, there was some consequences that was going to come into play. You know, we're going to have to cut teachers, we're going to have to cut nonessential personnel, we're just going to have to look at some programs and maybe even some consolidation of some programs. Classrooms will be a little bit larger and, you know, just the problems will increase. However, state and federal funding, in the recent years, federal funding for education has declined. At the same time, the state has increased the burden on you to support us. The state has currently reduced our funding approximately four hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which I noted earlier. And this just creates such a severe impact on counties like Gates County Public Schools. To keep you informed and to keep the audience informed, I have some information right here. And I got the CFO right here. I think he's the best CFO across the state of North Carolina in the school system. He's meticulous. He gets to work at four o'clock in the morning. He drinks a half a gallon cup of coffee and he leaves at six o'clock at night. So, I can trust him with his figures, with his calculations, and he gets it down to the cent on where we're at as far as balancing our budget. Right here is the first figure that I'd like to show you and to the audience as well. This right here is the figure of our available fund balance as of July one, two thousand fourteen. This number right here is what we have appropriated to use this year. Now, what we did, we pulled money out of our fund balance to hire reading resource teachers. Now, reading resource teachers were required by Judge Howard Mannes to make sure that kids pass Read to Achieve S in third grade so that they can be prepared for fourth grade. Now, that's something that we felt like that we had to do. With some, one reading teacher, T.S. Cooper, scores were, made a tremendous impact. Students did very well. Those students that we thought may have to go to a reading camp this summer aren't going to have to go to a reading camp just because of the impact that this teacher made with those young students, which I think is phenomenal. And that phenomenal, and I think that is a good call that we pulled those teachers out of our fund balance. But again, that's something that you can't keep doing because your fund balance is going to run out. This figure right here, for this coming year, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, we're appropriating to use this amount of money, three twenty-five, oh six, which brings our fund balance down to two hundred thousand. This is the number that will bring our fund balance down to two hundred thousand. Our next year's local budget, which is three million, six hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-four, is our local fund to, fund number two budget. This number right here is fifty-eight thousand dollars. This is what we received from our fines and forfeiture. And this number right here, five seventy-one, is the amount we need. If not, as I stated, we have to rid. So, we need this amount of money to make sure that we don't have to reduce enforcement. On May twenty-ninth, I have a board meeting. And I recommended to the board the following positions that were to be cut. And that would be a middle school reading coach, a middle school art teacher, elementary school art teacher, an elementary school dance teacher, one CED teacher, one high school science teacher. Assistant principal, reduction in hours from twelve to ten minutes. A finance assistant, two part-time custodians, and a technology assistant. In addition, testing assistant, which is a level-mate position. District-wide travel reduction, an AD stopping, consolidate a program of Gates County High School and Middle School Band. And also within these reductions and cuts, two school resource officers, daycare program, and of course Damascus After School Reach program, which costs us eighteen thousand dollars doing transportation. I think that we're in a, we're in a situation here, like I said just a little while ago, where all school districts are in a bind and all county commissioners have to make choices. I stated that, you know, we went into our fund balance and it's kind of like a savings camp. Everybody has a savings camp. Sometimes you go into it, but you don't really want to because you want to save money for a rainy day. Two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars is what we have that we can't go above just in case something happens. You have a fund balance. I don't know what your fund balance is. I don't know how your fund balance is, if it's restricted or if it's categorized on how you operate your fund balance. But from what I've read today and what I would like, I know this is public comment, and if you would, I would like, you know, a response maybe to let people know, using Facebook as our communicator, of what your fund balance is used for and how you can or can't pull money out. I'm not an investigator in a fund balance. I care about my kids, K through twelve. I'm, I'm, I'm not into anything like that. But I do have a, I, I try to look at myself as a problem solver. And there is something that I would like, before you can comment if you will, if you'll take this and look at this at your next meeting. And it's a resolution. And it's a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to change the requisite funding formula to increase the number of allotted classroom teachers' positions by applying the formula to the individual schools and grades rather than district-wide and find these positions by the current budgeted amount. Whereas, North Carolina General, General Assembly sets forth certain funding formulas for the Department of Public Instruction to apply when funding public education. Whereas, the state determines the number of teacher positions allotted to each school district based on the number of students in each grade. The state determines the student-teacher ratio as well. Currently, for kindergarten classes, the student-teacher ratio is one to eighteen. Thus, there must be one teacher for every eighteen kindergarten student. The state takes the total number of kindergarteners in each school district and then applies the ratio to determine the allotted kindergarten teachers. Since the state applies the ratio in this manner, it appears that the individual school meetings for teacher positions are often not met since the student count's varied from school to school. So, let me give you a good example. Take for instance, let's say we have four schools. We have three at the elementary level. Let's say we have four, which have twenty-five kindergarten students in each school in a, in a single school district. When you apply the state-acquired student-teacher ratio of one to eighteen in this scenario, you would calculate about eight teachers. However, when you use the formula the state uses, you would add all the kindergarten students in a single number equaling one hundred. Next, you apply the student ratio, teacher ratio, and divide one hundred total kindergartens by eighteen students, which equals five point five teachers, when eight teachers are actually needed. That's the problem with the state funding formula that puts us and the local county commissioners in a bind. Whereas currently, the formula for funding classroom teachers is based upon the number of teacher positions, saves the average salary plus benefits for the school system. However, the school districts are not given the budgeted amount. They're given a monthly reimbursement for actual expenses and not enough to cover all positions required based upon the state determined by student-teacher ratio. The amount reimbursed is lower than the budget amounts for the teacher position. And whereas the state can cover the shortfall of teacher positions by applying the funding formula based upon individual schools and grades instead of only applying one total number for teacher positions for the entire school district. Whereas, it appears that the money to cover these shortfalls for teacher positions is already budgeted for the state budget given the unencumbered money remaining after the actual reimbursed amount or deducted from the budgeted amounts for teacher positions. And whereas the state budget for teacher positions, then the state should pay for all the budgeted amount of money necessary to fund these needed positions and not rely on local taxpayers to cover the shortfall. So now, therefore it be resolved that the Gates County Board of County Commissioners request the North Carolina General Assembly to make the necessary revisions to its funding formula to fund the needed teacher positions in the local schools by applying the formula by individual schools and grades rather than one number for the entire school district and use the remaining unencumbered budgeted amount to pay for the needed positions, thereby releasing the local taxpayer this unnecessary burden of funding teacher positions which are already budgeted for by the state. It be further resolved as clerk of the court, the Gates County Commissioners, sends this resolution to Governor Pat McFroy. That's something that I would, I would really think that would behoove us to do. But if you would, since I explained to you and to our audience out here of where we're at in our fund balance, maybe it might be a good time for you, this is public comment, I know it's my public response, but it might be a good time for you to explain to everyone else how your fund balance works or how it's categorized. else how your fund balance works or how it's categorized. And thank you very much for your time, and I do appreciate what you've given us. Y'all get me wrong, I, I, I do appreciate what you give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams for coming. If you give us a comment about resolution, we will certainly take that. Do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. I got one. I have one.
Just email it. Just email.
I would.
Okay, next person on the list is Thomas Hill.
Ladies and gentlemen, county manager, county commissioners, county chairman. My name is Thomas Hill. I'm a resident of Gates County and the Republican Chair. Wanted very briefly say a few things. The Republicans got together in March, we had our convention, and with over sixty-six percent of vote, I have won my reelection as chairman. With that comes an awesome responsibility with the Board of Elections. This year, unified a new Board of Elections, nominated to the state as well as to my party, and is as follows. The new chairman of the Board will be Chuck Henkinson. Another Board member will be Melinda DeWitt. An alternate member, just in case of death, moving, God forbid, will be Leslie Kupp. And with that said, in questions of the 2016 race in Corby, I will not be seeking my party's nomination for county commissioner. With that said, only one thing remains. On the first week of June, I always offer a, a challenge, a coffee challenge. Last calendar year, I offered a cup of coffee with Mr. Owens. I've yet to receive that response, yes or no. However, it's time to move on. Mr. Freeman, if you serve, would be as I come, to hear some Republican concerns, complaints, comments, appreciations. I would greatly appreciate my daughter, anywhere in county, a cup of coffee, and I would appreciate your time with me and if we could sit down and hash out some issues. I have had the pleasure, the honor, and the privilege of sitting down with, at that time, County Commissioner Kenneth Jordan. What we spoke about was productive. I don't feel we need to go into details, however, it was productive, and we saw a great deal of production come from it. So, I look forward to that coffee. You can reach me, this is a public number, seven two two thirteen oh six. This is the Republican number, air of course, area code two five two. I look forward to hearing from you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations on your election.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, next on the list is Claire Whitehurst.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Dr. Williams spoke very in detail and eloquently about our, what we consider dire financial situation with the Board of Education's decisions that have to be made for this coming year. And he spoke about Facebook, and a lot of people use it to, to air their laundry and they take pictures of their dinner and share what they're eating and do all kinds of things that might be a little silly side. I like to use it for more positive things and sharing pictures of family, et cetera, and post inspirational things from time to time. And I felt inspired by a quote yesterday, and this morning I posted this, and I thought I would read it to you. If you will take the time to pay attention and listen, I'd appreciate it. And this is what I wrote. "I try to get up early enough each day to have quiet time, reading a few devotionals and related scripture passages and keeping a prayer journal. This is my fuel for the day. Yesterday, a quote from someone whose name or book I've never heard of really stuck with me. Nelson Henderson said, 'The true meaning of life is to plant trees under whose shade you do not expect to sit.' As followers of Christ, we are to be gospel seed planters and may often not live to see the results. But let's take this to another field near and dear to my heart, education, especially public education. From my parent, grandparent, former teacher, and now school board member perspective, teachers are seed planters, and very often, we don't see or realize the impact, impact we have on an individual or our community or society through that individual. But like a farmer, each year, in good weather or bad, we plant, hope, and pray for a good crop. Having the right mixture of elements can produce a bountiful harvest, yet a storm can wreak havoc and even destroy the crop. I believe we are weathering a budgetary storm in public education. State funds have lessened each year, and though there is a bit of hope from the House's recent decisions, the Senate hasn't finished its work and their leanings thus far are not so promising. Our local funding is very limited, and therefore, we are making heart-wrenching decisions that we don't want to make. We are cutting out some of the elements needed to produce a healthy crop. My prayer is that all of us in positions of leadership and those with the purse-string power will make decisions with vision or planting trees under whose shade we do not expect to sit. We have a good school system in Gates County with lots of dedicated employees. I wanted to remain so and even improve to be, to be the best in our state. Let's get involved and make it thus." And then I put, "The Commissioners meet today at ten a.m. at the courthouse." And I want to say we do thank you for the support. We know you are limited, but if there's any creative way to thank, whether it be fund balance or otherwise, we appreciate the extra help. Thank you.
Next on the list is Judge Chapman.
Good morning. Appreciate the time for you to hear our concerns. I'm from daycare, and according to the Board of Education, they are considering closing our program. And I just feel it's important that everyone knows how important the daycare is to children. Dr. Williams talked about the basic of education, and I feel like we are the foundation of that basic. It has to start with us. We are teaching these children important things prior to them even coming to kindergarten. If you go back and look at all the children that have gone through daycare, I guarantee you at least, if not more than fifty percent of those children are on honorable and principal list. I feel like we have done a wonderful thing for all the children in childcare and in this county. We have children that come from other counties just to be part of our system. And I just, I hope that, if there's any way to help support that daycare and not close us, I, I hope that you can consider that. There are a lot of people here from the childcare, staff and parents alike, children as well, that support us. I know some of them would like to speak. I also have eight letters here from parents. If you would like me to read them, I can.
Can you read or do we just?
Would you like to select one, maybe?
Yeah, and then give us a rest, help you read.
This says, "Dear Gates County Commissioners, my name is Lori Lawless, and my child Aubrey has been enrolled in New Beginnings Daycare for over three years now. I am writing to you in support of keeping the daycare open. I understand, I understand how funding cuts at the state and federal level have required me to make difficult decisions regarding positions and programs in our district. However, I feel that closing down one of the only two childcare facilities in our county would be a terrible mistake. Our children need the safe and nurturing environment that New Beginnings Daycare currently provides. As a parent, I have been tremendously pleased with the quality of care that my child has received over the past three years. She is fully prepared to start kindergarten in August as a result of the preschool education that her teachers at New Beginnings have provided to her. Aubrey has learned all of her letters, numbers, colors, and shapes. She can spell and read several words and comes home singing songs that she has learned at school. Her handwriting has come a long way and is evident that she spends a great deal of time on practicing her fine motor skills at New Beginnings. Aubrey also enjoys playing on the wonderful playground provided by the daycare. The teachers, in addition to the director, have gone above and beyond the college duty to meet the social and educational needs of my child. I currently have a three-month-old at home, and I'm looking forward to starting him in daycare in the near future and also coming to you as a third-grade teacher at Gatesville Elementary School. In my ten years of experience as a teacher, I can tell which students have engaged in some form of daycare preschool experiences when they have been, when they begin first grade. Research has proven the numerous positive social, emotional, and academic impacts that quality early childhood programs have to children when they enter kindergarten and continuing throughout their educational experience. New Beginnings Daycare serves families from all over our county. If you take this program away, I fear that we will see detrimental impact in the ability levels of our students entering kindergarten at all three elementary schools. This will have a small effect on the upper grades as well. I ask that you please exert all efforts to locate additional funding for our New Beginnings Daycare program. As a parent and teacher in this wonderful district, I sincerely appreciate your time and careful consideration in this important matter. Thank you, Lori Lawless."
Thank you. End of position. Director. Thank you. Detective Josh, we're doing.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is an absolute privilege to address you. A lot of this privilege I'm talking about is something that a lot of us have fought for. So, I'm going to be very brief. I made some notes that I've quickly found that are useful. Someone told me one time, "Don't bring me a problem unless you can bring me a solution with it." Well, I'm going to stand here and tell you, I don't have a solution, but I think I have some ideas. I want to sprinkle off of what the school superintendent said. His comments changed the whole complexion of everything I have written down here. And I'd like to ask you to just consider this as far as the complexion of the decision that you have to make. What would this look like? What would the situation look like had we not built a new library, and we really didn't need? What would it look like if we didn't purchase land that was unusable for its attendance? And you know exactly what I'm talking about, what was the wasteland treatment facility? What would it look like if the increase of our staff members in certain areas, where two-thirds fewer people not many years ago did just as much work almost as efficiently? What would it look like if we weren't outsourcing some of the functions of our government, collections, so forth? And I understand that that is taking place. If you consider those things, what would that decision today look like for you when you're talking about cutting education money? It would look a lot different. I'm embarrassed to stand here in front of you because I don't, I don't have a lot of answers. And I feel like at this time, we spent better in other business. I also feel, excuse me, feel a sense of shame. And that shame is that our county government has the inability to address the particular situations that are in front of them, things like infrastructure. We have water leaks that have been identified for three years that haven't been fixed. And I could go on and on, and I'm not going to. Jack Owens asked me to remind him six months ago about a leak in front of my house, and I'm not going to go into any of that detail. I have a heavy desire and prayer for every one of you folks. And that prayer is to succeed, make us proud, and give us the government that we deserve. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say that, and you'll be very emotional, so I'm calling us for that. I have two kids that have been to the daycare that are still hopefully in the daycare. Addison, which is four, Drew, who's five, they've both been in there for three years now. Madison has learned so much in there. She is going to miss the kindergarten cutoff by two months, so she'll still be in there for another year. But she is far beyond exceeded where I thought she should be. We have no idea that she's at the level that she is right now. She needs to go to kindergarten this year because she knows half the stuff that they're going to be teaching her in kindergarten. She's doing math, and my mother-in-law just assumed that they're teaching her math in daycare. I asked him if they're teaching her, and he said, "No, we're not teaching her math." Well, I'm assuming she's picking it up in daycare somehow because we haven't been teaching her math. She won't teach her how to read now because they're working with her on this kind of stuff in daycare. I'm guessing I'll read to her in daycare, so she's picking this up in daycare. So, she's learning so much in daycare. So, she, I mean, I'm right there with Ms. Jo or whoever it was, it's spoken, that said that, how much they have learned in daycare and how the kids that go through daycare are so, learn so much more from being in that kind of setting. And then, there's my son, which is one that I'm going to be mentioning about, that's autistic. Sorry. And he's in his pre-teen class during the school year, but he's in daycare in the summertime. And I love this girl there, I love her, Lori. The people that they're experiencing with, what's up with kids about, it means the world to the special experience. And there aren't other daycares in this area for special kids. That means so much to me to have daycare and everything else. And there's a deal with him, knows how to work with him. He doesn't know how to communicate well. He's doing a lot of help to him. He doesn't know how to play with other kids in high school. So, there's still a lot of issues that he's working through. Ms. Jo has been wonderful. She goes to special training classes so that she can work with Drew. They go to Yale if they have any questions. Lori knows how to work with him. Him being at the school means that Lori can continue to speak to therapy through the summer. It means that Crystal can continue his occupation of therapy through the summer. These are things that he can continue to get through the summer, whereas if he was at home or in different daycare, he couldn't continue to get their services. So, this daycare means the world to having special kids. And with the rates, especially of autism going up, there's more and more kids being diagnosed with autism. There are more kids in the county that would be diagnosed with autism that would need places to go, and they're trying to work with him. So, disaster that's been happening, so if you would sign your way.
Good morning. I wasn't going to get emotional. It's all easy.
And I urge you to reconsider the refusal of closing this daycare center. My son reads attends New Beginnings and we have visitors since 2020 when he was just three months old. As a parent, as a parent choosing childcare as a big deal, you want it to be a safe environment. You want proper care and attention. You want specialization opportunities. And you want a cultural diverse atmosphere because we are a blended nation. You want activities to provide growth and development, space to play, run around and be a kid. And you have to trust the hands you leave your child with because honestly, when you leave your child in daycare, you are not trusting them with your child's life. New Beginnings is such a wonderful facility that provides all of this. They worked very hard last year to obtain their four and a five-star facility rating. That goes to show that they went above and beyond expectations to ensure that their staff is trained to provide the best care possible to its children. Living in Gates County, this rural community, there aren't a lot of available resources. But having a daycare center in the school setting supports working mothers and families that need two incomes to survive in today's economy. This is a huge benefit of the county and school system. The daycare is used by teachers, residents, and other county staff, and it's located in a central location. Closing the daycare would be detrimental to our community. Without daycare, many parents would have to quit their jobs and possibly move from the county. The daycare takes in revenue and has the potential to take in more revenue. Now that we parents are aware of the situation, let's please work together to find the funds to raise the funds to keep this needed wonderful daycare facility open for the taxpayers, for the working families of Gates County.
John Wong.
Good morning. Hey, Dr. Williams was talking about some of the positions that have to be red because of the latest shortage. I was one of them. I am the elementary school art teacher. I have been working at Gates County for over ten years. I have a son that will attend Gates County High School next year, one that attends Central Middle School, and one that will start at elementary school. We live in One Hattie County. There is a lot, and a very serious lack of good school systems in this area. Gates County is one of them. As the art teacher at Gatesville and TS Two for Elementary School, I also serve as an A-plus coordinator for Gatesville. And I get to see how much the arts affect how these children learn. And with the shortage of funding and losing these arts positions, these children will suffer. So I am imploring you to do everything you can to provide some additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Greenwood.
County Commissioners, Chair Preston Hoffler, and County Manager Natalie Mottrey. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm kind of an unlikely supporter of New Beginnings Daycare because I don't have any children in New Beginnings Daycare right now. However, I would, I think Joe Chapman would probably agree that I've probably been the biggest beneficiary of New Beginnings Daycare. I had three children that actually went through. Of the twelve years that the program has been operating, ten of those years my children have been attended. Some years even two were in there at one time. From my perspective, it has been a huge benefit to the Gates County and especially to us working moms. So I wasn't emotional either until all these people got up and started getting a little emotional. It means, I have spent years bragging about this program to everyone that I could possibly talk to about how wonderful this service is to the county residents of Gates County. New Beginnings, when the husband and I first moved to the county about twelve years ago, our biggest concern was where we were going to put our children. And as a mom, which is what I'm here today representing, it was number one here, so I'm my number one priority. And we didn't know anybody in the county. So when Ms. Susan Bunch took the time, forty-five minutes of her day, when I first came here and showed me every bit of what they did in New Beginnings, I knew we were going to be okay. I knew that this was where we needed to move our family. And through the years, I haven't been disappointed. It was Susan Bunch, Mary Unflit, Joe Chapman, Ms. Arlene. I've never ever had any issues or problems. The reason why this daycare is so important to the county is because I have a job that I cannot call in and say, I'm not going to be there because, you know, a home daycare person was sick or something happened. This kind of program is so important to us working moms. And I urge you, and I appreciate Dr. Williams' comments, looking at budgets, I work with the budget every day. We're getting towards the end of the year, it's getting a little scary. But if there's any way that you guys can fund this program, it is so essential to us working moms and dads. And the other thing I'd like to say is, when we moved here twelve years ago, I couldn't get over how inexpensive the daycare program was. I think that there's a lot of moms, like Ms. Williams was saying, that if we, if there's a way that you guys can restructure this program, we, when we left, when our last child went through last year and graduated from New Beginnings, the rates twelve years from when we moved to Little Washington were cheaper than what we were paying twelve years ago when we left Little Washington. I appreciate what a bargain and what a benefit my family has personally benefited from New Beginnings. I firmly believe that the parents that go to New Beginnings fully understand the situation that you guys are in. And I think that if you guys have, if there's a way that you could restructure it, find money, it's huge. I'll be honest with you guys, there is no way that Jay and I could have stayed in this county the last ten, twelve years without this program. There's no way. We wouldn't have had you in here. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I believe that's everyone who's signed up, but is anyone else who would like to speak? Those are the brothers.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, Chairman Hoffler. Chuck Brothers, 485 Plum Hill Road at Gates. I purposely did not put my name on the agenda list because I was hoping that Dr. Williams or somebody from the school board was going to step forward and educate the public as to this situation that y'all are faced with here today. I totally got caught up in the Facebook traffic of comments that were made by various and sundry people within the community that led me to believe that what I heard at the last Commissioners' meeting, that the funding for this fiscal year versus last fiscal year had been cut. And the question that I raised was, what is different today than what I heard at that last meeting, which was level funding? I received no answer from anybody until last night, when I did my diligence to reach out to school board members and Commissioners to find out what was, what was correct or incorrect. So we, prior to say, I think the facts that I got last night mirror image what he has said here today. As many of you know, my wife and I adopted a small child January of 2014. Our oldest son has just turned thirty and he's been out of the school system for thirteen years. So now, at fifty years old, we're back into the market of raising a child of which will be in the school system of Gates County is my full intention. I mirror image the concerns that Mr. Booth expressed to you about various and sundry things that have gone into the past, that thought process of how we have spent money on our county level, of how that complexion would be today. I do have concerns that we have become too much of a bureaucracy in some of our local county departments. Our population has decreased according to numbers that I readily read as being on the planning board, I was on the North Carolina Planners List, so I got that information pretty specific as to where our population growth was going. But yet we have increased the number of people that it takes to manage less people here in the county. I do have some heartburn about if we can find money to repurpose the courthouse that was coming out of the general fund, that has, I have not heard today what the purpose of the courthouse is going to be. If we can find that money out of our general fund, to be sure we can find money to influx back into the school system to help them out of this scenario that they're in. I follow county and governments and I still have a large tie to the city of Suffolk. This is no different than what went on at their public hearing where they were bombarded with thirty-two people that came forward into the public hearing, twenty-eight of which were in support of a $3.2 million increase for the school system, which mainly was going into salaries. They find a way to come up with that money. Not trying to compare Gates County to the city of Suffolk. They have more resources, they have larger base of tax, but they have revenue streams. And Mike Newman, who was a businessman, made the comment to the city manager, we've got revenue streams that we can go back and analyze. And they analyzed quite a few, the ones that stick in my mind were sales tax and cigarette tax. Do we have revenue streams that we have taken into consideration on the light side? Do we have money that is more accurate, that could be looked at, that could come in and be purposely spent back and put into the budget for this? Asking that question. I know y'all are on timeline to make decisions. I know you've got, on the dock of your day, you're going to adopt the budget. But is there ways of, bless his heart, Johnny Moore, this is the famous saying, revenue streams. Do we have revenue streams in this county that we can go back and revisit that would bring more into the day-to-day operation of this county that could be earmarked for that? I had a conversation with our tax assessor not too long ago. I recently acquired a property and I went to her and asked her what it was going to take to get the property on the, what's the right term? Conditional use. Yep. And we went through that process. At the same time, I asked her, I said, please tell me that the information that went out in March in the paper of people that were five and seven and nine and ten years, how much is that money is out in Ezra that we are still trying to collect that I counted some that was ten years out? I think she told me it was somewhere between $350,000, maybe $400,000 that is owed to the county today from people that are five years and out on collections. If we can be so diligent to go out to a water field in ten days, why can't we go out and money that's owed to the county that's been out and left field for ten years? This is part of our problem is not being diligent enough to collect what is owed to us and manage what our business is. Y'all, we're running a business. I cannot run my business and operate and pay my bills if I don't collect from somebody that owes me the money. I can't pay my members. It's the same way with y'all. We need to be more proactive on how we're going out for money that's owed to us in ten years. I cannot carry our county for ten years, and I don't think the county should be. And basically that's what you're doing is you're carrying on the county for ten years. Saying all that to say this, I'm in support of trying to find some money to help their situation out. As a new parent, a child is coming forward, is going to this, I don't, I certainly hope that we can find a solution. As Chairman Hoffler said to me on the phone the other day, what we do this year is this year, but we've got to be able to sustain it. Because I'm sure he's going to be looking for the same thing next year if the state and federal doesn't come up and back the efforts. So my question to you is, is there revenue streams that are in the county that are understated that can come up to bring that level up? And if we can find money to fund other things out of the general fund, truly, as Lamar Benton, my past county manager, said, we should be able to fund publication, public education first and everything should come out.
Thank you for your comments. We will have comments at, when we do the budget interview this, I'm number eight. Okay. Moving to administrative reports. Okay, we will take a ten-minute recess. It's nice and stretchy, it's, and we'll round a little bit. I have a cold, so all people are hot, so we are hopefully having a nice medium. Okay, but at item five of our agenda, administrative reports, the first one is County Manager.
And this is for April 24th through May 22nd. We have it for you, and I just received it this morning, a report from Ms. Saff with Saff Conservation. So she does that at a later time after we've all had a chance to review the document. As I said, I received that about nine o'clock this morning. Most of April and May was spent dealing with budgets. Budget meetings were held with Commissioners and various department heads and agencies May 12th and 14th. Public hearing was held May 18th. Your packet includes the 15, 16 budget ordinance, which will be voted on later during this meeting. All Gates County employees attended insurance enrollment meetings during the week in May of 12th. And as you will see reflected in the budget, health insurance rates did decrease for fiscal year 15, 16. I attended the final session of the Minnesota County Administrator Course, April 28th through May 1st. On May the 8th, I attended the public employment law update at the school of government. On May 13th, JCPC held their regular meeting at the community center and the 15, 16 annual plan was approved by the body. That is also on the agenda for later during this meeting for the Commissioners to offer their final approval. May 24th, Environmental Field Day for sixth graders was held at the Park's Mill Pond, and I attended to observe and I was very impressed with all the stations that took place. And I'd like to thank Dr. Bob Lass for inviting me, and I'd like to thank everyone that planned and taught the sessions, especially everyone with the Gates County Soil and Water Conservation. There were numerous others there, and I hesitate to name everyone, but they were all very busy and I could tell that. and I could tell that the students were very engaged in each of the activities, stations. And we also attended an emergency preparedness workshop held at the EAC. On May twenty-second, interviews were held for the corporate extension director position. Do you have any questions?
I'm only corporate extension director, selected.
An offer should be extended within the thirty days.
County manager said she had completed the course, she had graduated from that municipal county administration course and got a recognized there at Chapel Hill in early May, so congratulations to her. She has worked very hard over the last, um, twelve months, nine months, uh, to complete the course. It might have seemed like twelve, um, there. Okay, finance and tax report, Ms. Lane.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Had a chance to look at the collector's report. I just want to say the DMV, the BTS report is still unavailable as of this morning from Department of Revenue. They're still maintaining that site, so the revenue column for DMV, the county and the city there will be given to you at which time we can access those reports. Any other questions on the collector's report or any comments on that?
Didn't have a question, but every time I look at this, I look at Travis Ellis, and I see we have no activity, any correspondence from him regarding the accounts that remain with it.
Uh, no, so just basically, two weeks ago, we just corresponded with his paralegal, Kim Sealy, to send an updated tax statement, if you will, on the three accounts that remain with Ellis. That will, I would say tidy up those last three accounts, that's all behalf of Ellis. Zakiya's, we have moved in that direction, as, as we knew earlier this year, the board approved to send thirty-six more additional accounts to Zakiya's, and we, we've had some good response from those demand letters that have gone out and a conversation with Madam Chairman Hoffler not long ago, we did receive a payment of fourteen thousand dollars for several year, you know, delay, but on just, from just one taxpayer. So those letters have excited some response with those people. We, we intend to be more aggressive, I've been there eight months, Lord Chavis about six. We, we hope to be more aggressive with the, the, the delay accounts that remain in the county and get some of the revenue where it needs to be. So as far as Mr. Ellis, those three accounts that remain, we updated them in recent tax statements. They are unfortunately difficult accounts, as we know, they are air property and they are proceeding with advertising by publication. That notification, since they are unreachable, if it's air or state property, they're gonna use that service by publication method, and if you start seeing those in the Gates County index and our local circulation, at which time we'll do a guardian ad litem step, that will be the next, as well as some recent activity we have with Zakiya's. We have a property that will be hopefully headed to the courthouse very soon, we're trying to get some guardian ad litem attorneys suitable for that case to represent on behalf of the county, so we're moving forward, yes sir.
And I see we did have issue point out, activity for Zakiya's legal services, and we are trying to be aggressive in getting that money that is owed to us.
Oh, yes ma'am, yeah. Phone calls, field visits, I don't hesitate riding out, visiting people, well, whatever it takes, phone calls, payment plans, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Ellis, let me ask you one question, how is the software transfer set up?
Um, it's still going well. We do have the issue with the server that IT Director Warren Curry has been involved with, we're ordering some new compatibility parts, that, that, that server is gonna improve the system function of that server. So with that in place, I think, I think it's yet to arrive, at least by this afternoon tomorrow. With that in place, you, we don't think it's paying any glitches, so you know, have it smoothly as well. And you do have one refund there that was not ready at the time of the report, but it was one from an overpayment, actually, we received a payment from Lake City Financial or so, as well as the taxpayer, so that refund has me entitled it refund number one, in the amount of, you know, one hundred dollars there.
And you have the document, documentation along with it?
I do, yes ma'am.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So.
Motion is made to approve the tax refund of one hundred dollars for overpayment or pay over the finance, hunting and the private official, but.
That's correct, yes ma'am, double payment if you.
Double payment, do I have a second?
Second.
Second has been made, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay. I'll sign it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, tax, I forgot what's that, personnel report. Any questions that anyone has, I was in our binder. Finance. You have the reports, if I'm answering questions, it's not a budget amendment, it's on later in the agenda. And from Glance, I know your financial report, it seems everyone is in, I saw that the budget amendments will take care of some of those that are in, over.
I have one question for the finance officer director. On page three of twenty-three of revenue statements, I am eleven dash thirty-eight, thirty-nine, eight ninety-one, we have a miscellaneous revenue of fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell us what that was?
Yes, part of that is carried forward from last year, there was a twenty-five thousand dollar payment relating to the CDVG project. The payment was received and paid back out to CDVG across every fiscal years. The remaining portion of that is a thirty thousand or so tax refund that came as miscellaneous revenue that's since been taken out to the different liadings to which it related.
Part CDVG and part tax refund.
And we'll have the budget amendments later due in our report. And department reports, are there any questions from, from commissioners or any comments from the department heads?
Chairman, I have a comment, the fire inspections have been accomplished, and I'd First of all, as, as you know, I received an email from the owners of the Sunbury School, they were concerned with the fact that they were asked to have an inspection done on the facility, Sunbury School, by the fire inspector, and they first presented with a fifty dollar charge to do the inspection, and, and they asked the question of what would they be looking for in hopes of possibly trying to figure out, you know, are there any things that they need to be aware of and probably rectify? There seem to be some difficulty in determining what would be looking, what they would be looking for, and it appears the inspector provided them with a sort of a generic statement, you know, he's gonna be looking for things, of course, that require. The concern I have with that is that I do feel our citizens, our business people, need to be aware of what they need to comply with. I think I should be upfront. I gave you some general statutes. And the general statutes I have, I see the fire marshal was here, I don't know if our inspector's here, but the general statutes that I have clearly specify that the fire marshal, that commissioners would be aware, you see, some of them are highlighted, I got highlighted one here, under two thirty-four, one fifty-three, eight, two thirty-four, in the first paragraph, it says that, "The board of commissioners shall set the duties of the fire marshal, which may include, but are not limited to," and it goes on to give the list, and item five is making inspections, making fire prevention inspections, including periodic inspections. I'm not aware of the board being, having given those or approved those duties and how they will be carried out. If you look at one fifty-three, eight, three fifty-two, those are duties and responsibilities regarding inspections and, and under item eight-four, same statement is, is there, board commissioners may enact reasonable and appropriate provisions governing the enforcement of laws or its regulations. And if you look on the back, which is, I think, where many of these inspections precipitate from, the commission of insurance has the authority to go in and inspect a building if they suspected of having, being overcrowded or having commercial materials. But there again, in, in those same scenarios, the way it's carried out, I think the board needs to be aware of it, and they need to be able to approve how it's gonna be conducted. So having said that, we have signed an improvement ordinance that let is a fifty dollar fee on businesses to get an inspection. I'm not sure that the way it's being carried out, if that's even appropriate. These inspections that I'm seeing, they're not mandatory, if someone complains or if there's suspicion of, of there being a hazard, then they, they could be implemented. The only required inspections that I do see, based on the general statute that I have, would be the one, one fifteen C, five twenty-five, which is five twenty, and that is in terms of schools, and that has to be done twice a year.
Mr. Jordan, this is not a school, this is considered a vacant premise, and I have discussed this in great detail with Mr. Prong, and also spoken with Mr. Mitchell about this, and as well as Billy Lynn about that. This is not a school. And I know that Mr. Mitchell is here to address someone that can connect with GP have, because someone from the Department of Insurance is not able to be here today.
Well, the definition of a public school does not meet Sunbury Schools. The building, the fire code addresses inspections of abandoned and vacant buildings that fall under that, that is a state issue, not a county issue. That's what's being enforced by Mr. Prong. These inspections, because we're providing services, due with that, reacting and charged for such. Mr. Prong has told them that he would wait to see for the first inspection, find out what they need. As far as a specific list provided before them, there's not a list. There is parts of the code from experience. If you provide these people with a list, they go back and say, well, this one on your list, why are you hitting me for it? There's not a list. You go by the code, and then you'll be provided with a list of what corrections are done. There's no, no inspector is gonna have a list of everything. That's, you'd have twenty pages of stuff that you got to look at because, for example, a code book or a five hundred page, how you gonna make a list from five hundred pages that you're interpreting on site?
But you say that these inspections come from commission insurance, or where do they come from?
Fire code.
Out of fire code. And you have, who, who sets that off? What tells you you have to go in there and do it?
Our code states, the section states what needs to be done, the one if the state certifications will be the inspection.
Right, but the point I'm getting to is that, you know, all these ordinances work together. If you've got no statute, one fifty-three, eight, two thirty-four, that says that there's something in place that isn't approved of how they're carried out, I think that needs to be, commissioners need to be aware of how you're carrying it out, you just don't, okay, you've got a fire code, and all of a sudden you're saying, well, I'm just going to enforce it. Fire set works and counts. That's, 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 that's who, that's the budget, what, what cost of that inspection. So what is in place that we're aware of, that how those duties are carried out?
There again, things that are in the building code, electrical code, fire code, is a state issue. I don't know any department that goes a step-by-step, play-by-play with the commissioner. That would impede the duties that we have. The things that the commissioners set are fees and so forth. The procedures as far as electrical, how, when to energize, when to disconnect, what deals to have a go, is that a state issue? We do not consult commissioners on state issues. We have, I have called D O Y, Richard Strickland has improvised that, that the commissioners need to keep out of state issues.
Well, if it's a state issue, if we've got a local employee can't carry it out, we're funding, we're funding that position. Now, you don't only fund positions that you have no control over how it's carried out, and that's, and I think it's the general statute fact, that, that's, that's what I'm saying, I mean, if it's, if it's a state law, then the state is responsible for, for ensuring that it's carried out. If they're gonna provide funding to do that, that's fine, but I think the general statute speaks for itself.
And the Department of Insurance issues certificates, that is their state representative, that is us. We are going through the steps of doing the inspection. We have a set date to go out there, exact job site to do the inspection.
Are the fire codes already available on the website? Is that possible?
Not all of them are available on the website, but they can go to these places where we purchase them ourselves and purchase them. The county inspectors, we purchase them, just like if the public or a contractor, anybody else can.
Well, I, I just personally feel that we need to be more aggressive on how those, how they're carried out, to make sure that, you know, we're knowledgeable, we're in agreement with it, and that's, that's my feeling on it. You know, you feel that you have the authority to do it, everything backs you up, well, I think you need to see that. I, that's my feeling on it. So I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board because it does seem a little bit, uh, not organized the way we're doing it, in a way that I would choose of. I think that, you know, we need to take a look at it, under your purview, I think we need to take a look at how it's being carried out, and make the board aware of the processes that you're using, and if there are improvements that need to be made. can be made. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, as far as that? But I haven't had time to peruse all of this, but I do see where on some of these general statutes, this is commissioner of insurance, the chief fire department, chief of police, where there's no chief of the fire department, city or county building inspector, electrical inspector, heating inspector, or fire prevention inspector has the rights to do some of this stuff. And I know that, you know, when you're building, you have all codes of state on your line. And to, so that I can get a certificate of office.
And his job description specifically says fire inspection. I did not have a copy, that's what I was looking for. I did not have a copy of his job description, but it specifically says, it mentions fire inspections.
How long has the fire inspector been under the building?
When he came on board in December.
Because we've got a fire marshal, and if there are fire issues, you think that they would come under the fire marshal. You know, what else, what else does a fire inspector do besides just fire inspection?
The definition of fire marshal and fire prevention is a loose term that the county puts on. They have the same certification through the state. There's no fire marshal certification, there's just fire level one, two, and three. So they have the same certifications depending on their level, so they can do the same inspections. So there's really no difference between, I believe Billy is a higher level, the fire marshal Billy is a higher level than Bud is. So some of the bigger jobs Billy would be able to do where Bud would not. Now Bud will get his higher levels. When that is the case, then really and truly, there's no difference between what inspections they can do. Now, as far as administrative or other duties designed by the county, that may vary. But far as inspections to the state, there's no difference as far as fire marshal, fire inspector. The inspections are the same, it's just what level that they're at.
Well, when we, when we add the fire inspector position on, what was the rationale behind he being an additional fire inspector?
He's more than, I'm sorry, he's more than a fire inspector also.
He was a fire inspector to begin with, just part-time. Then we were able to hire him full-time to use him as fire inspector and building inspections because it was justified that we didn't need one of those positions at full-time, but we could use one for both because things were picking up for us, we needed help in the inspection department.
I believe must have been as he or Billy Lynn came on, we had this discussion.
While this committee is coming, there again, you know, the fifty dollar fee, I think we really need to take a look at that. I'm really not comfortable with telling someone, go to their business and say, first of all, you need an inspection and it's going to be fifty dollars. There needs to be some justification as to why we're going to charge it. We don't charge the schools, we have to do the schools twice a year. And the general statute says that we'll do it with the personnel we have that can charge the schools. But guess what? When we charge the schools, we have to give them funding to pay for it. But our citizens, we're going to put a mandate on them and yet, you know, they don't know what we're going to inspect.
Well, that's no different when the schools do an addition. We charge them for a herd of others, came out of the same purse, so we wait, it's the same, it's the same thing. I mean, that's like your kid wants money from you. Kid may call it his money, but it's coming out of your pocket.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Just to clarify a little bit, Mr. Perron worked part-time for me as a fire inspector. There was an opportunity for a part-time building inspector. The solution to that was we can take a person that's working part-time for me, he needs a part-time person, we can make a full-time position to do both of those jobs. There are trades in the North Carolina code enforcement, building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and fire. So I do the same, I operate as a fire inspector under the same purview as he does as a building inspector. So it made sense to me to put all those things together. Now, I can still conduct fire inspections at a level higher than Mr. Perron, such as the schools, such as the new assisted living, but on a day-to-day basis, I don't do fire inspections. I'm certified to do those, which gives me the authority to carry out the code, but I don't do that on a day-to-day basis. The reason we hired Mr. Perron six years ago was because of time. There wasn't enough time for me to do all of my jobs plus fire inspections. So he came on as a part-time employee to do those fire inspections and then recently was merged together with building inspector.
Okay, now, there again, I would like to, I may bring this up again, take a look at the codes, I would, you all explained to me, not here, you don't have to do it right now, as to how we're implementing those fees. And just to get some ideas as to how we are approaching the inspections and the procedures we're using to do that based on the fire code. I think our business is legitimate, our citizens are complaining, and we need to address, we don't want to answer jobs, we want to make sure that the fire inspections are done, they're inspected, they're there for a reason. But when we do them, you know, it should not be a strong arm, shot should not be something that people feel they're intimidated, it should be done in a manner that they recognize that it's there to help them as well as to prevent harm to those who may be around them. So I'd like to get you all sometime to see how that's done and also take a look at how we're implementing the fees that we just approved as an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, correspondence, I don't believe you have any. The county calendar, please. I believe this month, I think we should get finished the budget, it's three, that's our last concern. Okay, we do have a public hearing today. All the personnel, I will entertain a motion to go into the public hearing concerning the Gates County Personnel Ordinance.
So moved.
A motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, we are in a public hearing for amendments to the Gates County Personnel Ordinance. This is, the ads have been run in the Gates County index for the public hearing on May twenty-first and May twenty-eighth of two thousand and fifteen. If you notice, you have a copy of the advertisement, there is going to be changes in concerning protest amendments, dealing with time and leave by incumbent weather. Do we need to brief the changes? Okay, any comments about Personnel Ordinance changes? It's trying to clarify some situations that have come up. Here are no comments. I'll entertain a motion to come out of court.
So moved.
Motion is to be made, is properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, a public hearing has been held concerning this. We will not entertain any discussion from us or our motion.
Were these, these are someone's thing to, we discussed over the years?
They have come as a result from the Personnel Board.
These are things that we have noticed over the past year, and some of them dating back further than that, either need to be clarified or in one case, we've changed the dates for the family medical leave back. F M L A is proposed to now begin third consecutive work day minutes. That is more in line with state policy as well as most county policies. Currently, our county policy is you do not begin F M L A until the sixteenth consecutive day of missed work, so you can only miss work for three weeks before F M L A will protect your job.
County manager, you said that this puts us more in line with other counties?
Correct, and state, most places say three to five days.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt recommendations on the Gates County Personnel Ordinance presented to us by Personnel Board.
Okay, a motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second, and that is Addendum one with the sections that are...
Okay, Addendum one, section six.
No, Addendum one is, it's already an addendum and that is, that sentence will be included in the addendum. The others are referenced by section, section six point five point one, section six point ten, and section five point two one.
Okay, a motion is to be made, a seconded. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on this, changes to our Personnel Ordinance with the addition to Addendum one, section six point five, six five point one, section six ten, section five two point one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So approved. Okay, all this, if you remember, Angela Welch came here last month and we voted on the C T P map, but the town of Gatesville had not voted on that or had that, had not responded, and we had to get their response and their, they had to get to the town of Gatesville and for their presentation, and they have done so, but now we have to re-approve what we approved last month. And you saw a string of emails concerning that, what had happened. So we had to make some corrections on some maps and resolutions and of course, we had to get Gatesville on board as well. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve once again the C T P that the, that we have been working on for probably the last year.
So moved.
A motion has been made, a seconded.
Fair.
Motion is made, made and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Hopefully, we have not taken that back. Okay, finally, we come to new business. And it is, and I of course will be looking at the budget, a budget amendments.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have several budget amendments ready for you, and hopefully this will pin us up for the year. I believe there were a few administrative amendments in your packet as well, if you're information. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those, but they were all pretty straightforward. The numbers twenty through twenty-nine do require your approval. So if it's okay with you, I'd like you to go through them all, and if you have questions on these two, then maybe just make the motion, I don't, if that's okay. Number twenty is to increase the funding for the medical examiner expenditure. We've had additional autopsies and unfortunately deaths this year that cost us more than anticipated. We had some additional funding from the S R O grant that we didn't anticipate this year, so we're using that to cover. Number twenty-one is to reallocate the salary lines within the tax department from full-time salaries to part-time to cover the contract for Renee Guinness and her assistance during the sophomore transition. Number twenty-two is to increase and reallocate the inspections department budget. We've had higher than anticipated costs for the inspections at the Gates house. We've also had higher than anticipated revenues due to those inspections. So those fees will cover the part-time salaries and travel expenses for Virgil Parish to do those inspections, and then there's some other reallocations within there to cover other expenditures. Number twenty-three is to reallocate the departmental budget for emergency management. Generally, these would not come to you, but because there are salaries involved, we have brought that here. Number twenty-four, we are reallocating the sheriff's department budget. We've also had to add some additional money to cover higher-than-expected boarding inmate fees. The reallocations within the sheriff's department are strictly reallocations and the additional funding required was to cover the inmates, not to cover the sheriff's budget. And that one's got some extra lines, I'll be glad to answer any questions on that one. Number twenty-five is to reallocate the governing bodies budget, to move some money around within your budget. There have been obviously some additional miscellaneous and emergency costs this year that we've dealt with, and the professional services line had some additional money to cover those costs. Number twenty-six is to increase the budget for the generator transfer switch project ordinance. It's fund number forty-two. This is grant funding and expenditures to go with it, there's no county money here, it's strictly grant funds. Number twenty-seven is also the budget for a new grant that we've received through emergency management. This will probably have to be carried forward into next year to be spent, but we wanted to get it budgeted in this year in case we can expend some of the funds. And then I will probably bring the carry-forward budget amendment to you in July for this funding. Number twenty-eight is to increase the budget for the drug enforcement line for the sheriff's department based upon court awards that were received, which generally will go to this line to cover those expenses. And number twenty-nine, I believe it's not in your book and was given to you today, that came in a little bit later, the extension department. You have that one? This is to basically reallocate funding within the Genesis grant budget. And again, reallocations that normally come to you, but there were personnel costs involved, so we brought that forward to the board for your approval as well.
I have one question on twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Court of wars, restitution?
No, it's when they go to court and I guess their fines, charge, some of that money comes to the sheriff's department, ready to be able to speak to that better. Over the years, we used to give much more money than we get now, and that money actually funded this line item in the budget. Over the last few years, that money has dropped off and we're not getting those funds as much, and the general fund has actually been supporting these activities. But as we get that money, and we will generally go back and add it to the sheriff's budget because that's what those funds are for.
Okay, any questions you have on any of these budget amendments? And basically, it's moving money from one line item to an all in the same.
The next one is, yes, some of them have additional revenue funding, and really, a lot of this is cleanup work at the end of the budget year, you know, so we've done through the year, hopefully this will take care of it. Hopefully, this will take care of everything for the year since this is your last meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
We knew these were coming. We've been talking about it for a month or so, so we've not called on guard or surprise at all and the approval of the, of the board members, I believe that we approved all of these in one vote.
Okay, amendments 20 through 29.
Correct.
Okay, a motion has been made and popularly seconded that we approve these budget amendments, amendments 20 through 29. Any discussion? Hearing none? And I would just say 29 is our topic for the year. Correct. I mean, you do these consecutively, not...
29 are the ones that have come to you, they've been administrative amendments as well, I believe we're around number 20. I have to go back and look if I...
But it was that we have to act on. And that for a whole year, just, I think, I mean, the people are actually pretty close.
Yes, department units have done a fantastic job this year of monitoring their budgets and staying where they need to be.
Yeah, I just want to give them credit for that.
If they owe the hundred dollars, doesn't have to come to us, that's right.
Actually, anything within a department that doesn't affect salaries does not come to you. We have certain limitations between departments within funds. The ordinance spells all that out, but everything that we do comes to you as an F Y I. So then the financial report in the front of your packet will have any administrative amendments that you do see, so if you have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to ask them, but you do see them all, they just don't come to you for board action.
Okay, a motion is on the floor to approve budget amendments 20 through 29. All those in favor say aye. All those who don't approve? Okay, passes. Okay, going to the next, we have a budget ordinance adoption before us. A lot of discussion this morning. We have already heard about the budget and certainly I think that's not one of us sitting here who is, is not aware that, you know, sometimes there's some have to be painful decisions that have to be made and our hearts delight to a, but we also have responsibilities too on our side of the table. And just to, just a couple of opening comments before we get into the budget. The state of North Carolina requires us to have a balance. Pure and simple. We also have, we do have a fund balance. We are regulated by the local government commission and it analyzes our financial statements along with the old 99 counties in North Carolina. It keeps a watchful eye on our finances and we are grouped by size and what they do is they take a look. We're a group, we're in the small county group of counties with 25, 300 people or less. And what they look at is, first of all, the local government commission, you have to understand, if we ever want to borrow money or do anything, we have to get their approval. They require us to keep a fund balance and a parameter with all 25 counties that are in our group. I believe there are 25 small counties. And if you don't, you know, letters are sent and if you remember a few years ago, Chauan County, they were, they can really actually come and take over our finances if we are not preventing their parameters. So I just want to make people aware that we have, yes, we do have a fund balance, but we are in the bracket that we have to be in. They require us to keep so much money in reserve because of a disaster that can strike and fund balances should be used only for not something, a recurring, something that is a recurring budget item, but for something that is a one-time deal. So, you know, we have, our hands are tied somewhat about that. You know, like I said, they look over our finances and right now, we are, the medium fund balance, I mean, for our area, for the size of county we're in should be about 30%. We are not at 30%. We're 22, but we are on the low end of our bracket. So I just want people to be aware of that. It's not like we're setting on, setting on the money and we don't, we're not going to spend it. It's that we have parameters and they say we have to keep so much money in reserve. And I think we have been upfront with the Board of Education, we have met with Dr. Williams, with Thor members numerous times about the budget and told them how tight it was. Certainly, we have got our phone calls and we have listened and there has been, as Dr. Williams pointed out, there has been some disinformation, misconceptions, and we don't make cuts. We give the Board of Education the money and they decide how it's used. You know, and to be honest with you, we have not heard much about the daycare except in the last few months. And I believe I met with Dr. Williams on Monday and we talked about the daycare and, you know, we offered him some suggestions. Is it being run at capacity? Is it, you know, a business, it's, you know, most daycares on the ice side is for profit. Are y'all breaking even? And he said that they were not, they were in debt. And my understanding that they could be in debt, well, most of the years that they could be in and operating. You know, the question is, if you don't, you know, make sure you have, if you're not operating at full capacity, you know, advertise, make sure you're not, if you're running in debt, you might need to examine your brakes. And I believe his is applewood, that's a joy. I was talking to some merchants, green wood. It's something like, it's very reasonable, the brakes were. So I think there might be, you know, there's some things that maybe could be done there. I'm sorry that some people, sometimes people had service and did not pay, you know, and, but that, remember, it's run by the board, I mean, the bicycle system, that is not run by us. And certainly, I have not heard one person say anything against the way that the people, the staff operate. They were very pleased with the childcare that they received. So that has been, you know, we were, that was not our call. Would anyone else like to say?
Yes, ma'am. In the five of us up here, way too late to talk everything that's been said, so I want to jump out here and I hope that, this is going to be jacked over to speaking, but I think a lot of the echo from the commissioners. Dr. Williams has a tough job on his schedule and does a good job of his job. At budget time, he has hard decisions to make and those decisions are controlled by the federal dollars that don't come, the state dollars that don't come. They're affected by the issues of this board and the condition and position that we find ourselves. We agonize over these decisions. We really do. When we're meeting and talking about and looking over a list about where these dollars are going to go, it is a tough decision, but today, when you see the ladies and gentlemen that come to that podium, it adds to the heartache that we feel. Those were real, genuine comments that came to that podium today, every one of them. This budget affects every area of county government, but when it affects a child, it is hard. The decisions about a budget have basically been made and had to be made and now on top of that, you know, we see the face of who is affecting. So I just want the people, the citizens, the public, Dr. Williams, all of your people to understand that today, you know, we were faced with the decisions and again, the faces of the people and the people we don't know about. And one example is the lady who spoke about her autistic child, Ms. Harlan. That's hard. And I just want the public to know that when we are in deliberation about that budget, we know that we have a purse this size and it can only address issues this size. It can't address issues that are this big. So we ask the public, the Board of Education, to stand with us, support us as we support you and to let us take this as a date, June 3rd, 2015, and already be thinking about this time next year and come up with some fresh ideas and some fresh solutions to what we may very well be faced with next year. And we do thank you. We have a great school system and if we don't say it enough, shame on us, but we have a great school system and we thank you. We thank the citizens, the teachers, the staff, all the public for coming today and expressing their viewpoints and we thank you very much.
Well, I'll just say that the budget that we have didn't get everything we wanted. Some things in there I would like to see that was not there, but we have so many dollars to operate on and we have to operate on what we have. The option would have been to raise taxes. We can, we can probably afford whatever luxuries we'd want if we raised taxes, but that doesn't go very well with the ones who are paying taxes in the county. So we took what we had, we've done what we could. One of the things we did not do is not cut school system budget from last year, became the same, which certainly I would not have been in favor of cutting it unless there was a very good justification to do so, but that's where we are. I do, I'm a little hesitant to say what I'm about to say, but I won't say it because I feel it needs to be said. In the state of North Carolina, the finance of the school system has been tended over to the commissioners, the board of commissioners, but also in the state of North Carolina, the board of commissioners' decisions are not final. If there's a potential or thought that, that what we've done is not justifiable, certainly there's an avenue the school board can take, they can take it to court and certainly the courts appear. We would not want to see that, but certainly that option is there. And having said that, in other states, I believe such as New Jersey, the school board has the taxing authority to raise funds for other schools if they feel that they need it, but in North Carolina, it's given over to the board of commissioners. So we look at it, the management of the school system is in the hands of the superintendent and the Board of Education. They know what they need and what they can work with. Certainly, as board commissioners, we've seen what we can give without putting ourselves in jeopardy, but certainly we want the best for our children and we ask that, you know, take a look at what you've got, you know what your options are and certainly we want to do what's best. And I appreciate the job you're doing, Board of Education, appreciate the support that our citizens give us. Thanks.
I just want to say I'm glad to see everybody has stayed. I wish the full group that was here this morning had stayed to hear these comments also. And just to let you know, there have been misconceptions put forth. I'm not on Facebook, I cannot speak firsthand or wasn't on Facebook, just from what I get calls and visits about it. And as Mr. Jordan just said, we did not cut the school budget for a hundred dollars, but we were accused of it. And we just, a lot of us just find these talks about the daycare center in the last few days and just let everybody be aware, the county does not control the daycare center. They are not under our control whatsoever. It is a, as I understand it, it is a private business to be supported by those that use it. So the condemnation that we're getting for that is, in my opinion, unjustified.
I would certainly like to say to you and to everyone else as well, because I appreciate, and we as a board of commissioners, and I know these folks, these men and women that sit here with us, appreciate your comments and we appreciate your concerns. We hear your comments and we take them into our minds and our thoughts and our prayers. The men and women that work on the staff, the county manager do an excellent job and the county manager's done an excellent job in presenting all the figures to us as well as other items too that come before us as you were born. We disagree to agree and imagine that. And we always do that as a board, but we come together and we do operate as a team and we have to do that for you and we do that for Gates County. So we appreciate your prayers and thank you.
Just a couple other things. You know, most of our money that we have comes from profit tax. We get $5,381,000 from profit taxes.
And that's estimated, that 98% collection rate, and that was something I was going to say if I may. I know that was addressed earlier, what are we doing? Tax department, as everyone's probably aware, has had a huge change over the past year to new staff and they've been here six to eight months. So they are learning the ropes, they are actively trying to collect back taxes and whenever we set down to calculate this budget, we have such confidence in them that we said, okay, they're going to collect 98% of the taxes that's hoping to be coming for this coming year. So in the past, it's been based on 96, 97, 98%, so we're going to continue that. And we're confident they're going to do it because we've seen how much hard work they've put into the system over the past six to eight months. So we have looked, we have identified all of the revenue that we can identify and we have stretched it as far as we can stretch it.
Also, you know, we have three levels of government in this country, the federal, state, and local. Unfortunately for us, we're at the bottom of the chain and the federal government passes unfunded mandates that we are required to do. The state passes unfunded mandates that we are expected to do. There's nowhere else for us to pass it. And we've had, we have taken hits with Medicaid, K3 reimbursements, not what they were. We still have those individuals who perceive that, they still have to, we have to give that money, come up with that money. County extensions, the state and federal government used to pick up 70% of the salaries, now it is, and we did the 30, now we're doing 50 and 100% of those. And that's just to name a few of the unfunded mandates. You know, a few years ago, we were at... You know, a few years ago, we were asked as voters to pass an educational lottery, a lottery, to help with school construction and school items. What has happened to the lottery funds? They have been raided by the General Assembly. We still get some, but not what we had hoped for or really painted on with some of our decisions we made. You know, we still are paying off the school debt of $3.3 million for constructions that we have done in the past. We're paying for a library, we're paying for a DSS building, we have to make those payments as well. So all of that, you know, we passed a resolution, sent it to our General Assembly, restored lottery funding, that part of it. Along with Dr. Williams and our boards met together, and we talked about, we know their capital needs. There was $2.5 million requests for both. And we told them, we said, you know, we don't have that money, but we need to sit down together and try to come up with some creative thinking and thinking outside of the box. And we have agreed to meet with both boards together and try to see what we can do because we have critical needs. Our school buildings are aging, and there are some desperate repairs that need to be done. And we want to try to work and see what we can come up with. We are trying, but you know, you can't spend a dollar at one time. And we have agonized, and really, it's created a lot of agony for some of us, especially by the schools. And we have what that overstream of revenue that we can, and see encouraging people to do different things and seeing what we can do to save money. And we, you know, schools were not cut. I just want to emphasize, schools were not cut. A lot of, at the very beginning, we said that the money was tight, and departments were asked to cut their budgets. The schools, we did not cut. Some other departments, I mean, the majority of the other departments were cut. It's just been a very difficult year financially.
Anyone else have anything else to say? Okay, the budget is for us. And you have your motion.
Chairman, the budget presented before us, the budget ordinance adoption fiscal year 15, 16, I move that we accept that budget.
Our motion has been made to accept the 2015-2016 budget ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
And that is for our Section 1 revenue as well as all that is included there inappropriately.
Is any additional discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Section 8, 8158. Section talks about contract authorization. The last sentence, that all contracts authorized by this ordinance are approved or signatured by the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, the County Manager, and all the perp to the Board of Commissioners as appropriate. I feel that we need to add to that, after being stamped and signed by the finance officer, that sufficient funds are available or budgeted for the contract amount. I think the general statute requirement, I think it needs to be in the budget, reminds us that when we enter a contract, it has to be stamped by the finance officer with sufficient funds.
Chairman Jordan, so there, the second sentence. Also, the county managers authorized to enter into contracts of purchase of apparatus, supplies, materials, or equipment as described by General Statute 143-129A up to the end of their end for informal bidding, which are within budgeted appropriations. Does that cover the question you're saying?
I did look at that general statute, I don't believe so, because the general statute said it has to be stamped, has to be signed. That is a separate requirement. The finance officer here, are you familiar with that, how you should be?
Yes, I'm not sure this exact, if 129A is a pre audit certification, but you could just add the three words after the word part, you just put "after pre audit certification", that will take care of all of it, yeah. And I, General Statute 143, 129 takes care of all those, but I'm not sure exactly what day is on that copy.
So you would suggest adding "after pre audit certification", and we do that with every contract.
And it's also within the Gates County purchasing policy stating that it has to be pre audit certified.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And you, you're going to be looking for an amended motion?
Yes, I am.
And the three words will be added?
"After pre audit certification".
Chairman, I amend my motion to accept the adopted budget ordinance 2015-2016 with the said amendment.
Now seconded with those additions.
Okay, amended motion has been made. A motion to amend the motion has been made and seconded. Hope I got that correct. Okay, discussion. Here in that discussion, we'll move to vote on FY 2015-2016 budget ordinance adoption. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. It is approved. Okay, moving to citizen participation plan. Ms. Bass, please.
Good afternoon. The citizen participation plan is part, will be part of the comprehensive land use plan that was previously discussed and approved at the last county commissioner meeting. And we're here today to discuss the citizen participation plan and to give an overview of how citizen participation is going to be done. As part of the county plan is Mr. Dale Holland, Holland Consulting from Wilmington. And I will let Mr. Holland discuss the plan with you guys, and if you have any questions, he's here to rehearse.
And his name is Holland?
Holland.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here in your county this morning. And if I might take just a second before I start the citizen participation plan, I, on behalf of Holland Consulting Plan, would like to very much thank you for the opportunity to assist the county in the preparation of your comprehensive plan. We look forward to that opportunity to work with you and the citizens of the county and there's the document. Just emphasize one thing, that this citizen participation plan is about transparency, the public input, and public participation. That's probably the most important thing I'll say as we go through this whole process, because the plan that you end up with will be no better than the input that we receive in preparing the document. It'd be a very simple thing for me to go to Wilmington or somewhere else and write a plan. It'd be my plan, it would not be your plan. So I emphasize one more time, the more input we have, the better, the more comments, the better the legitimate criticism we receive about the plan as it is prepared, the better the end result will be. The citizen participation plan that you have in your packet is not a required item. It's something that we routinely recommend at the start of a planning process. It simply sets forth the process, how the procedure, process will proceed, and it sets forth how the public at large will have an opportunity to be involved and then access the process as it evolves. The plan calls for the appointment of a citizens advisory committee. The draft that you have does not include the names of the committee members, but once that committee is appointed by this board, we will amend the citizen participation plan to specifically list those committee members. The plan calls for a minimum of three work sessions with the committee to assist with the preparation of the plan. Once the committee has prepared or is satisfied with the draft document, it will move forward to the planning board, ultimately the Board of Commissioners, at which time the Board of Commissioners will conduct the public hearing prior to the adoption of the plan. The schedule calls for a public hearing in November. That date is at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners once you have received the document. The public notification process will include the advertising of all meetings, including committee meetings, in which this plan or the planning process will be discussed, to be advertised in the Gates County index. A sign up sheet will be placed in the county administration building, which will give people an opportunity to register their name, address, and hopefully email address, and once we have that information, those folks who have provided us with that email address will get a direct email notifying them of all meetings. Notifications of all meetings will be posted on the county's website as we go through the process. The plan, as it is developed, will be placed on file for public review in the county administration building, including the Gates County Planning Department. All sections of the plan will be provided to the advisory committee before they are required or requested to discuss or deliberate any sections of that draft document. Once the sections of the plan have been provided to the advisory committee, those sections of the plan will be posted on the county website, so that interested citizens will have constant access to the plan and the process as it unfolds. The public will be given the opportunity to comment and ask questions at all committee meetings. At any time during the preparation of the plan, the public will be able to ask questions and offer comments directly to the county's planning department, including Ms. Baptiste. And finally, a public hearing will be advertised and conducted prior to the adoption of the plan. Early in the process, there will be an issues identification meeting conducted. That will be advertised countywide and will be conducted by our staff, and we do not have a date set for that meeting, but we would anticipate that meeting will be sometime during the month of July. But it will be advertised in the newspaper and on the county website. This adoption of this document, it's an administrative item with approval by the Board of Commissioners, it does not require a public hearing. I would be happy to try to answer any questions, importantly.
This committee, do you have any idea what size it should be?
We recommend, on a land use plan, that a committee normally be no larger than a range of nine to 12 members. We recommend for the, in the case of a tie discussion on an item, that it be an odd number. I think the minimum desirable for a county to decide to Gates County to be a seven number committee, we recommend a geographic distribution within the county. We recommend technical representation on the committee, meaning that it would be well to have at least some planning board members on the committee and some staff members on the committee. And it certainly, it's useful, but local discretion as to whether or not we had any members of the Board of Commissioners on the committee.
I, it says that the Gates County Lottery Committee will supervise the preparation of the draft comprehensive land use plan. In what way will they supervise? I guess my question is, how much authority will they have to make decisions on what you have recommended or don't recommend? Ultimately, I know the commissioners board will approve or disapprove, but how will you work under that?
Well, we will, we will use the committee as a review board, a sounding board, an advisory board as we go through the process. Ultimately, whatever draft plan we produce will flow through that committee before it goes to the planning board, and then from the planning board to the Board of Commissioners. The advisory committee actually has no final decision making authority. They are in a ad hoc recommending capacity. But the word supervise is intended from the standpoint that they are going to be directing us as to what they believe is important and significant for the future of Gates County as we put the document together. Once they have recommended the draft to your planning board, they no longer have any involvement. Again, it would be an ad hoc committee, and then the plan will flow from the planning board to you folks for consideration of the public here.
So whatever legal and foundational information that must be in there, certainly, there's not going to be a date on that. You know, if there's certain information that you know, you're the one that knows what should be in there, of course, it may not be tailored to the way we want it. We want it tailored to the way the advisory board would likely count it to look, but there's certain information that is probably foundational and necessary.
Yes, sir, that is our Holland Consulting Plan's responsibility. If it's not so packaged or put together for you, then we have it in our responsibilities.
Any additional comments or questions?
No, maybe just a comment. In putting together that package, would anyone else, husband, advisor, associate, manager, and/or board member have not been aware of that before? Yes, sir. You can be provided, if you request, the board, for example, hard copies of the plan that is drafted, or again, it'll be posted on the website. Anybody in the county will have access to this. I hadn't said this, but this will flow as a building process. We'll start with Section 1 and move through this plan and provide those sections to the committee as they are drafted. This will not be a process where four months from now, we're going to walk into a committee meeting and say, here's the plan. It's a learning process that, like building a house, you start with a foundation to build up, and that's how we will approach. And it might be tweaked the entire time?
Sir?
And it would be tweaked the entire time until it's? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's not final until the public hearings are held and you folks adopt. Thank you. Thank you.
And all of this, well, thank you for coming, and we're looking forward, before y'all can get started to work on this, and have us something to look at.
Well, thank you again for allowing us to assist you.
And thank you, Jennifer. Do we need to approve this?
Please.
I'll entertain our motion to approve this citizen participation plan for our preparation of our comprehensive land use plan.
So moved, seconded.
A motion has been made and seconded and in a discussion. Hearing that, all those opposed, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. We have a JCPC certification standards approval. There's information in our binder concerning that.
This is the certification standard form that the state provides for the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, and you can see it has been filled in, and it was approved by JCPC members who were in attendance at the May meeting. They are asked, it also includes the They are asked, it also includes a list of people who are members of the JCPC. All of the ones listed are mandated by general statute to attend or have an appointee. And then in the last page, which in our documentation is page 169, is the JCPC funding plan, which was discussed, I believe, at the May meeting as well. When Ms. Bradley was here, there's funding for alternatives for use, which is in the school system, and then Genesis and restitution, which is operated under the划分 extension of the 4H program. And there's initial documentation that explains what's been done over the past year. There's, they would like for you to take action because this does have to be submitted back to, has to be signed by the board chair. And then Ms. Bradley, as the chair of the JCPC, has signed and returned to the state before the end of the month.
And this is similar to what we do every year, correct? Is, I wonder, this is a recurring one that we've had in the past. Do I entertain a motion to approve?
And is that?
Yes, excuse me.
May I ask one question before, and is that figure remaining consistent, the 15,000 more of that at the end? Having compiled standards, the very last?
Which, I'm sorry, which page?
Which page?
Page 166. Having compiled with that paragraph?
Oh, that, that is something that's set by the state, and they do not use it. You can save any of the money to operate JCPC. All of the funding is allocated to all of the programs.
Right.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made, second, in discussion.
There's another one, a question for county manager, on page 167. They have a county manager designated, round here, didn't read one, and fill out the, we, the title and all the other things to check.
Because I am the county manager, if it's a designated, they put the title of the person who is representing them. For example, number one says school superintendent or designated. Adrian Bradley is the designated, and she is the director of student services.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. I'll oppose. Okay, the JCPC certification standard is approved. Okay, safety in mind for job description, that comes from the personnel board.
This is a position within the sheriff's department. And while this job had been established several years ago, there was never a true written job description, so we formalized that with assistance from the sheriff. The personnel committee did approve it, so this is before you for final approval. And these are current positions that we do have. It's just formalizing the title and their job responsibilities.
I see you may have like skills and stuff like that. Any certification we have to make sure that person has, your way?
The ones that were currently, or in the past, some of them are now actually deputies. Some that have been in that position, they have had BLET or some sort of other training.
I saw CPR in there. And in response to the Commissioner's orders, certain certifications have to be maintained if they're less than lethal material as well as lethal along with, with those certifications.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any additional comments or questions?
This is a person who's already hired, not hiring a person.
Right, right, and these are positions that he currently has. It's just formalizing their actual job description.
Hearing no additional comments, all those forward, say aye. All those opposed. And that passes, the job description, and that will go into policy. Okay, we have a telephone, for Gates County, mobile phone policy. You know, technology has changed, and we all have cell phones, and so we have the home policy as well.
And this is based on a lot of digging that Melissa did. She had helped compile several other counties. And it ensures that if someone does have a county phone, that they understand it is county equipment, that they are responsible for maintaining that equipment and using it in a professional manner, that when they leave employment with the county, that it reverts back to the county. But it also gives the option of, if you do not wish to carry a separate phone, and you wish to use your personal phone because you do not use, you do not feel that it's costing the county more to use a separate phone, you may use your own phone. And it does have several different options with stipends. And if you wish to use your personal phone instead of using a county-provided phone, you have heavy usage of a smartphone, it's $50. And if you have this moderate use, then it's $35 a month, then you would be reimbursed. And this is less in most cases than what we are currently paying for current policies.
Well, my question is, how do you determine moderate and heavy?
The ones who have, we would look at, if I was to turn my phone in, we would look at past usage because it tells how many text messages you sent, how many minutes were used for a phone, that sort of thing. And then we, that's how we would determine if it was heavy use or medium use.
But that's kind of subjective.
I have a question, ma'am, Chairman, too, just as pertaining to the personal phone. Would, would those records be maintainable as well as accessible in the event that a question came up as pertaining to whether a contact was made or some other instance?
They would be made aware that if they use their personal phone for work use, we have the right to ask for the emails that are sent using work email on their phone.
And without a subpoena? They, they would have to produce that versus having to go through a subpoena?
My question to the document, it also gives us the authority to publish the number, too.
How many, how many employees would we anticipate would possibly need a phone out of 74 to be had? Do we have 74 employees?
We do not anticipate more people getting phones. I know of at least two people who have come to me and said, I don't really want to carry two phones. I would prefer to use my personal phone and receive a stipend, which would cost the county less.
I get, the thing that, that we wouldn't want to get into is that, you know, all of a sudden now, we've got 12 people who carry cell phones, but now we haven't met the policy. All of a sudden now, we got 48, 58.
No, they would still, they have to meet the criteria that's set for in order to receive a telephone.
Job description, email.
Correct. And I've had some departments come to me and say, does this mean I have to give up my radio and get a telephone? And we tell them no, because we do have some departments that use radios instead of cell phones.
And you would use the eligibility that's listed on the page for it?
Correct.
But that's a good question, because I can see everybody lining up. Okay, all these have been very good questions. Any other comments? And you say all counties are doing this?
Correct. Except Melissa spent many days on the listservs looking at other policies. And other counties are also updating their policies as well.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
If I make that motion, second.
Okay, a motion's been made, second. Questions?
Yes, ma'am, just a quick thing. I don't know if it's an effective date, and if you please specify effective date, preferably July 1st.
Right, right, ma'am.
We should have mentioned that earlier.
Okay.
We had discussed that.
Will you amend your motion to say, if they have July 1st, 2015?
Zero, one, July, yes, ma'am, I'm there, yeah.
Commissioner Felton, you agree? Okay, a motion to adopt the mobile telephone policy to come effective on July 1st, 2015, has been made and properly seconded. Any other comments? Thank you for that, we need the date in there. Hearing no comments, all those in favor, say aye. I'll oppose. Thank you.
We know that last month, we had, it was, we qualified senior citizens. Yeah, the senior citizens month. This month, from May 8th, well, May 8th through June 22nd, 2015, is Adult and Elder, like Abuse Awareness Month. There's a proclamation in your packet to, for proclamation for us to sign. And whereas each year, more than 2 million vulnerable and older adults are victims of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. And research has shown that older adults who are abused, neglected, and exploited are three times more likely to die within 10 years than those who are not. And whereas, according to national statistics, elderly abuse is grossly underreported because of vulnerability, and older adults who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone due to shame and fear. And whereas, in 2014, there were almost 23 files and reports of abuse, neglect, exploitation of vulnerable and older adults made to North Carolina's 100 county departments of social services, not only by doctors and old professionals, but by family members and concerned citizens in our community. And whereas Gates County's vulnerable and older adults of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, and exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care settings, and communities. And whereas protecting Gates County's vulnerable and older adults is a community responsibility, and all citizens are charged under North Carolina General Statutes GS 108A-102 to report suspected abuse, neglect, or exploitation to the Gates County Department of Social Services. And whereas North Carolina enacted the first elder abuse law in 1973, and whereas on May 8th, 2015, through June 22nd, 2015, is Vulnerable Adult and Elderly Abuse Awareness Month in North Carolina. And this timeframe ties the awareness period to both the Mother's Day, Father's Days, and holidays, in hopes of reinforcing the spirit of respecting and valuing not just parents, but all elderly. And whereas, as we have a responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of Gates County's vulnerable and older adults, now, therefore, the Gates County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 8th through June 22nd, 2015, as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in the county of Gates, and commands its observance to all citizens, asking them to wear purple elder abuse awareness rubbers and follow note, do hereby proclaim June 15th, 2015, as World Elderly Abuse Awareness Day, and urge all citizens to work together to help protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, exploitation, because it's imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elderly abuse. This the third day of June 2015. Certainly, I think we all should be, we need to be aware and vigilant and watch out for our friends and family to make sure that they are not being abused in whatever setting that they may be in. I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation to declare May 8th through 22nd, a vulnerable adult and elderly abuse awareness month in Gates County. Question?
Okay, a motion's been made and properly seconded. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. I'll oppose. And I would encourage everybody, as this resolution says, like Mother's Day and Father's Day, to look around and keep your eyes open, and look back for your neighbor and family and friends. Okay, we have any additional new business? Okay, any additional citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am, put solid.
I'm Ann Howard from New York, and I just have a quick comment. The lady that was here from the convenience site gave us a lot of information. On Monday, Memorial Day, the convenience site at Budco, everything was filled up, and they had no idea that anything was going to be emptied. Of course, they were closed on Tuesday. Wednesday, it's the same thing. I know on World Day, people were off and working, and there was nowhere to put anything. They said, you can try Gates, they might have something. Well, that's not the intention of having a site in our area. But I was glad to hear what she said. She gave me this sheet and told me to call Brad Gardner at this number and tell him. And this is not the first time that's happened, several, several times I've been there. Thank you.
But, and you have, that number should be posted, so on the, that is being assigned, is it?
I think it is.
But certainly, sometimes they, I have been at times when they have been filled. But I think there's supposed, the people who work there are supposed to call when it's getting to a certain level, if it's ahead of time.
They called, but they have no idea when it, and I don't know when it was ever emptied, but Wednesday, still, there was no room.
And this same lady would be at the Hall Woodson Club on the first Monday night in July, and you'd like to invite all of your friends and neighbors to come down and hear her at that time?
First Monday in July, at what time?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
And they would feed you right there?
But no, recycling is good for the environment, it's good for the county, bottom line. And it's just the right thing to do, and we need to make, make sure we try to do it.
Probably one thing, just right off the cuff, that, two things collide right there. When people are off, that's when they do cleaning around the house, there's a lot of activity. But at the same time, when they, they can't call to dump a trailer if it's three quarters. They have to wait till it fills up, so that's sort of hard to.
It was filled when they went down Monday morning, everything was full.
Yeah, so two days notice, or maybe three would benefit.
Okay, well, before we go to close session, I believe we have Commissioners' comments. Want to start at the end?
Well, I'll readdress exactly what I said a little bit earlier, or as close as I can to that. First of all, I appreciate all the comments and concerns from all our citizens and all the folks that attended today, but others have called from time to time and, and give us some information or have some concerns. And once again, I'll say that we all represent all of you, and we represent all of Gates County. So we, as I said before, we disagree to agree. We get along, we are a team, we do work together, and we appreciate what our county manager's done for all the county and continues to do, and the staff that she's put together and what they do, because they all do support you, and they all do the things that you ask for, and they do it in the best light. So thank you.
I too, thank you for coming and for the special privilege that you have stayed for the duration and just showed that you are interested in what's happening in the county, and I appreciate it. And just encourage you to continue that and bring your friends with you.
All right, I too, thank everyone for coming and all that have stayed and your interest in the local government, because it's all about you, it's all about us. And I just hope that we'll continue to participate, get emails, I get phone calls, and we try to respond. to respond to all that do come. I will mention to the board as well, and to the citizens, I've had some calls regarding the dialysis center. I think a number of years ago, we entertained or tried to break through the county, the dialysis center, but at that particular time, we didn't have the infrastructure, I believe, the sewer system somewhat to support it. But I do think that with the number of citizens that are receiving that type of treatment, we do need to put that on the radar and talk them to some of the companies that provide that service, so that we can try to make that assistance for the citizens of the county. So I'd like to keep that in mind as well, and see if we invest in the future.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone who came and gave comments and offered solutions for brought-up issues. One in particular, Mr. Booth spoke about a water leak, and I just want him to know that that repair is already scheduled, and is scheduled for June 16th to be taken care of. It's one of the issues, it's on a main road right here in Gazeville, and you can't just shut down that main road just anytime you want to. Temperature's got to be right to prepare the asphalt, so we had to wait for this particular time and to get approval to do it. So it's scheduled for June 16th. One of you guys know that, and I'll let Mr. Booth know this afternoon. Thank you for coming.
And I too, being at the end of the end, everybody's kind of said everything I was going to say, but you, thank you for coming. It is nice to have people here. We listen to what you say. You know, it's been a very tough budget year for us, and, you know, we're not happy with the budget. And when I say we're not happy, we wish we could have funded everyone, all everywhere else, but we just didn't have the money. So, and it really does tear at our hearts, and, you know, everybody's calls is good, and I wish we could have done more. Have a nice rest of the day, and we look forward to seeing you in July when we get ready to celebrate country's birth day, and we'll have the commissioners see you on the 3rd, I believe. No?
The 1st.
The 1st, oh, I'm a.
Fourth is a Saturday.
Yeah, hoping for it. But let's have a wonderful week, recycle, and watch out for, I'll watch out for your neighbors as well. Thank you. We will go into closed session. I think we take the break. We've hit closed session in pursuit of North Carolina General Statutes 143-318, 118, Legal, Economic Development, and Personnel. Do I hear a motion for us to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to exit the closed session?
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded that we exit for my closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. It passes. Okay, Commissioner Owens, don't you have one?
Yes, on the matter that we discussed in closed session, I move that we instruct our county manager to look into that matter after a directive.
Okay, you've heard the, a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to instruct the county manager to carry forward by directive all the matter that we discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. On the second item, to direct our county attorney to communicate with the proper people wishes and to return with information to us.
So moved.
As directed.
Second.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. If that carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
So a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Nice to be in with you guys.